Thank you. Our next meeting will be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, November 21st. So we'll do the roll call. Dave?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
June?
Here.
Lisa? See Reese's name? I don't hear her. Lisa, we can't hear you. Just FYI. I do see your hand up, though. So far here. Mike's not here. Randy?
Here.
Susan couldn't make it, and I believe Tom also is not here. And I am here. All right. Consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from October 17th. Counts payable warrants and payroll warrants. Take a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
June and Randy? All right. Dave?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa? See your hand up? I'll take that as a yes. Randy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That is unanimous. Public communications. I don't, didn't see anybody signed up for public communications. So we'll go over to reports and information items. I don't have anything. So Superintendent Morgan, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, and I don't have anything particular to the report. I just have multiple items to speak on, so I will save my report to speak on those items.
Sounds good. Old business. I had school committee goals.
Yeah. So I, I put that on the agenda when I sent it, but I didn't hear back, so I left it on there. I know you all had approved some goals back a year ago in October. And so I shared them. I just wanted, because the communications committee had talked about them. So I wasn't sure if, if they wanted to continue that discussion with this committee, so that's why I added them.
I'm just pulling up, and I told Brad shortly before this meeting, I am way behind on emails. Probably like a week behind at least, so I haven't seen anything for quite a while, so I apologize for that.
Oh, no worries. I just prefer it's on there, so if you all want to discuss it, you can. If you want to continue it or just take it off of it, you know, it's pretty easy, rather than if you wanted to discuss it and it wasn't there.
Yep.
Right, excuse me. Tom has been in the waiting room. He has his hand up and attending.
Thank you.
You guys hear me now?
Yes.
We can.
All right. Does anybody have anything they want to chat about on school committee goals? I think, I guess one thing that I'll say, I mean, we obviously, we didn't do a quarterly newsletter. I think that's kind of rolled into the work that the communications subcommittee is now doing. So we've kind of carried that goal, if you will, over to this year, it seems. And then for the professional development retreat, we did our workshop a month ago. Couple weeks ago? I don't remember what that was. And I think out of that, I, I know a couple folks have reached out that we should do a committee retreat slash workshop, just based on some of the, the discussions and items that came out of our previous workshop, so. We can talk about that now if folks want to. Or we can continue that discussion and work to get that on the schedule. If folks still find that valuable. All right, I'll take that as we will, we'll continue that.
Dave has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Dave.
So I think that given the results of the visitor at our last meeting, that it might be good for us to try to start to at least consider some dates for that kind of a get together. It looked like we have some work to do as a committee. So that would be my, my suggestion in favor of that.
Do we want to? Because I know our next meeting is November 21st, and then we don't have another one until December 19th. We could put something together for December 5th, if that's. I know it's a crazy time of year. Or we're waiting until probably the January, February timeframe, which then you get into school vacation weeks and budget season and all that stuff. Randy?
Yeah, I would say if everybody can make something on them, as well as if we can get something together that's meaningful. Because we do need to plan that on what we're going to talk about and how we're going to go about talking and making decisions. It needs to be planned out, so if it can be planned out, I think the earlier the better.
Is that you volunteering to help plan it out?
I certainly have some ideas that I, that, you know, from last year. I could certainly put that in and see if I had the time. I would need some help. I couldn't do it myself.
Okay. Does anybody want to work with Randy on that?
I'd be happy to work with Randy on that.
Awesome. Okay, so yeah, if the two of you could do that, we'll target the 5th, so put a placeholder on the calendar for now. And then Randy and David, if you just let us know how, how things are going, if you feel like you can be ready for the 5th, then great. And if not, we need to reschedule, then we'll certainly do that. Superintendent?
Just to clarify, is the retreat school committee only, just for planning purposes?
I, I think so. I think that's, I think that's going to allow us to have some of the open discussions that we need to have in terms of our working dynamic and whatnot.
Okay.
But I'll certainly open that to the committee. Randy, do you have thoughts on that?
I was going to say the same thing. I, I think this retreat really kind of is to get the nine of us on board with what each other is thinking and how things should work and, and how we work as a group, so that once we get that together better, then we can work with the administration and superintendent better.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on goals slash workshop? All right. Thank you, Robin, for keeping that on the agenda. Look at that. All right, on to new business. We have the para substitute pay history.
Sure. So before I turn it over to Emery, just at the last meeting, we were talking about the differences between the para substitute pay, which is hourly versus the teacher substitute pay, which is a daily rate, and we did vote the teachers' pay, or the school committee voted, I should say, to move the teachers' daily rate to $100. But we were asked to try to get some history on the hourly rate that paras had been being paid during, during all five of my years. And Emery, Emery will explain essentially how long it had been going on for. But the issue we were running into is that the hourly rate for paras was more than what teachers were getting, substitute teachers were getting for the day. So Emery, I think you're on the call. If you could just kind of share with the committee what you've, what you've learned?
Yes, so I did, I did try to get some historical knowledge, you know, from people in the business office that have been here longer than Brad and me. And so even like Nancy Haynes, for example, who's been here, I think for 11 years, it's been step one for para substitutes. And so I took it a step further and I actually put out to my school HR listserv, which is about 250 members. It just explained what we do here is that, you know, historically, it's been step one. And if you do anything else different in your district, would you let me know? And I literally only heard from five different districts. And, and basically those other five districts, just they pay the, the teacher paras the same. I mean, the teacher substitutes the same as para substitutes. So across the board, that seems to be what, at least the industry standard in Massachusetts has been at this point.
So it does look, ultimately, it looks like the hourly rate for paras on step one has been in place for in excess of 11 years.
Exactly, and that, and right now, that's 1546 an hour.
So it did come out again slightly over $100 a day for, for paras. Something we had talked about was to potentially just make it the same. And then that way, it's consistent throughout the district at, at the rate we, that the school committee voted on at the last meeting. So there wouldn't be a difference, so to speak.
All right. Randy?
I was just curious. Whereas the school committee approves the rates for substitute teachers and nurses, where did, starting the paras come on step one, come in? Where was it ever approved? I understand that it was, it supposedly has been going on for a very long time. I'm just curious where, if you found out where that came from and how that got started.
I did not, Randy. That was, that was part of the research I was doing, because I, I have the documents whom we're, you know, you guys had voted on that many, many years ago. So I mean, even Nancy Haynes, she said that that had preceded her. She had no idea where that came from.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, it would be great to have, you know, something as far as, you know, a pop, you know, if you guys want to make it something that you, you'd vote on the same way as that nurses and subs, that would be great. So at least we have something in writing to refer to forward.
I can look at adding that to the GCG maybe, whichever the substitute rate is. Because I know it says teachers and nurses at this point in time, so we can take a look and see if we can add all other substitutes in there as well, so the school committee votes yearly on that.
So I, do we need a vote on this, Emery or Brad, or is this just information? I've kind of lost track of where that discussion was going.
Well, I guess I would say, in my opinion, if you're, if you're going to do anything different other than what we're doing right now at step one, that maybe you need to vote on something. What do you think, Brad?
I, I would agree. I would say it would either require a vote or we would just keep doing what we're currently doing. There's not a significant difference. You know, it really does depend on the expertise of a teacher substitute as to whether or not they can actually fill in the role for a teacher, but I know that from the para standpoint, paras are there generally to assist. And the substitute paras generally do take on the role of the para in the room for the entire day. So I, I do think it's comparable, just because of the, the length of the workday and the responsibilities. So I would say that it, it should be close, if not the same. And right now, with, with what we agreed upon at the last meeting, I keep saying we, it should be the school committee to move the substitute pay to $100 a day for teachers. We're going to be, I believe, within $5 of what the paras are currently getting paid at step one at the hourly rate. Is that correct, Emery?
Yeah.
I think it's 105.
Can do the math real quick, yeah. Paras work a, a seven hour day. So right now, yeah, the paras are making $108.22 if they work a full seven hour day, so.
Dave?
I'd also like to point out from the, one of the latest newsletters, the superintendent noted how challenging it was to be a substitute para for a day.
Yes.
Role and for anybody, including people with higher degrees in education, so they deserve every penny they make.
Yes, they do.
Randy?
I just caution that we keep in mind when we vote this each year, that we want to make sure that the daily rate of pay does not go above what a first year or first step para makes, making it more lucrative to be a substitute than a permanent para in the district.
That wouldn't happen, Randy, because it would be consistent. Step one always would be consistent with the CBA. So it would always be step one. It never would go higher. So that's how we assure that.
Well, if we raise the rate, let's say next year we decide 125 is what we need, then that's now higher than what step one makes.
Correct.
So just, just something to keep in mind.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise we'll take a motion if we want to change something. All right, we're going to keep things as is.
I will move that we approve para substitute pay at $100, the same as the teachers for this year.
Second.
All right, Randy and Tom, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so this is to set the para substitute rate at $100 a day. David?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June? Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you.
I assume this is effective immediately, just so I can let payroll know?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emery. Next up, we have the Alice drills updates. Ms. Smith?
Evening. So I just wanted to update everybody on our Alice protocols and our training. So we have done all of our intruder trainings for the fall, which is to the rally point. So all the students know where the rally point is and how to get there. We will still have our drills in the spring. Those are not to our rally point. They're just to kind of be in the building to figure out what to do if their intruder was, was in your building and what your other options are besides evacuating. And just the other thing that's going on with the Alice team, myself and Officer Zing from the Peppa Police Department recently went to a Nemlich Stars training. They sponsored it from, by I love you guys on standard response protocol for reunification sites. So that information, we will be utilizing, putting together some information on how to just, to do a proper reunification site, whether you're re-unified with parents and guardians based on intruder that you can't get in a building or if you had a fire in the building, or there was a ventilation issue or any kind of else other situation that could have them and how to reunify. So based on that, we're going to be putting some information together. There are some things that we will need, you know, to purchase to properly run a reunification site, like vests and signage and that type of thing to help parents and guardians know when they come in here, what to do. But other than that, it's, everything's going as planned. And we have, all students and staff are trained within the district at all schools and all areas on what to do in case of, I mean, intruder. And we do have plans in place for reunification sites. We're just going to enhance them.
Awesome. Thank you, Superintendent.
I just wanted to add that, that Ms. Smith, since I've arrived here, and I, I used to be a Stars team member myself when I worked in the Wall fam schools, she does a tremendous job making sure that we have the most up-to-date protocols in place. She's constantly going to workshops, staying current, and really maintains a really good relationship with all three police departments. Something that, that has really been great to watch is that it doesn't matter what town the Alice drill is taking place in, all three police departments are represented. You know, they're there with the kids, they're there with the teachers, and make it very comfortable, but also working with the staff to make sure that the kids take it seriously and that the kids feel safe while they're doing it. So certainly can't say enough about the work Ms. Smith does and the work that our three police departments do. So just want to thank everyone for the help on this, because it, it's not easy. It's something, kids get scared, especially at the younger age levels, and they really do a great job making the kids comfortable and training the staff.
Awesome. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the Alice drills? All right. Thank you again. Next, we have the 2022 MCAS presentation. Assistant Superintendent Reese?
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Camo is going to actually project the presentation. And I had an issue with my computer tonight, so I'm on my phone trying to do this. So I apologize. Are you able to see the presentation? Yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Coming up now.
Perfect, perfect. So Ms. Camo, if you can go to the second slide, please. Just some overview points that Desti has provided for us. We attended a training back in the end of September where they just wanted to highlight some things in terms of the state data and how we might interpret the data that we're looking at from our district. So just in terms of 2021, 22, this was the first year since 2019 that our grade 10 students had taken an MCAS test. So they didn't take it 2020, 2021, so they hadn't taken it for three years. And for all of our other students, grades three through eight, this was the first full administration since 2019. Last year, there was just, there was an administration for students, but it was partial, or in the 2021. It wasn't the full test exam. So one of the things the state has cautioned us is that while we may want to be looking at, and certainly within this presentation, I make some comparisons from 21, the testing from school year 2021 to the school year 2122, they say that that may not be the most accurate in terms of trying to compare both in looking at gains as well as looking at potential losses. Ms. Camo, you can go to the next slide. So just the accountability reports, and these are available on Desti's website. You can see them both for the district as well as individual schools. The information that's included this year on the accountability report is the data that was used for the accountability indicators, so all the different areas and subgroups and things like that that they looked at, as well as both school and student group percentiles. So percentiles for the different subgroups that we're looking at within each school and within the district. What's not included this year on the accountability reports is the determination as to the school's need for assistance or intervention, as well as the targets or measure of progress towards those targets. And those are things, because the state said they're not really, 2021 data, it wasn't a full set of data, so they didn't, they didn't feel like they could use that data to make comparisons for growth when we were looking at the 2022 data. What this does do, it, it allows us to go back to a cohort model for student growth percentile calculations. And on the next slide, I'll talk about what that means. But the other caution they had is that it's really, they don't want to make strong comparisons between 2021 data to their 2022 data. They actually, within their state reports and when they put out information, they were making comparisons from 2019 to 2022 data, because 2019 was the last time when the test was fully administered prior to COVID. You can go to the next slide, Ms. Camo. So just in terms of student growth percentiles, what that is, is it's a reflection of how each individual student grew compared to other students that had a similar test score in the previous school year. And so what the state has said in terms of what we call typical growth, anywhere between a growth percentile of 40 to 59 is considered typical growth. If you have a growth higher than a 59 percentile, it means you've grown more than other students that had the same profile as you the previous year. If your growth was less than that, then you had less growth than the, the typical student. And again, they cautioned that the last two and a half years have not been normal, so the results are going to look different. And the other thing that they are taking a really close look at in terms of analyzing the data is the impact of absenteeism. Not just students that were absent, but absences of teachers who may have been impacted by COVID and just the way, the interruption to education and the impact that that had on students and on the testing results. So I have, and there's lots of slides, lot of data. What I'm going to do is just highlight from both ELA math and science, just some key points on each of the slides that I just want to make sure that we notice. In terms of 2022, North Middlesex was at or above the state average in all grades except for grade five. And that we had a similar pattern of change in general when comparing North Middlesex and the state change. And that's going to be a message you're going to see here from me throughout the presentation is just the trends that we saw at North Middlesex were very comparable to the trends that you were seeing at the state level. The other thing that's really important to note when we look at our ELA results is that we were in year one last year of implementation of a new curriculum. So we started our EL education program in grades K through eight. And in a couple slides, I'll talk about the, what's called the implementation dip and the impact that that could have on student results. Actually, if, go to the next slide, Ms. Camo. And you can click through until you see integration, and I'll. So I'll explain the whole slide once it's up there. So essentially, we, we looked at implementing the EL program and districts look at implementing a new curriculum. When scores become stagnant and there's a gap between where we want students to perform and where they're actually performing. And that's when you look at implementing something new. There's a lot of research, and Michael Fulan actually has, discusses this in terms of the impact in terms of what happens when you implement a new curriculum. And it's called the implementation dip. So essentially, as you start to implement a new curriculum, there's anxiety, there's fear, there's confusion. And so scores and test results drop as students and teachers are trying to navigate a new curriculum. And then as you start to shift upwards, that's where teachers are starting to accept the curriculum, they're starting to explore and create new things within that curriculum and what they call searching for meaning. So making sense of the materials and how it best supports students. And then you get to that highest level of integration when we're at that point of people really accepting the curriculum, understanding it, and knowing how to navigate it. And the goal of any type of implementation is really to minimize, there's always, the research shows pretty consistently, the implementation dip is a pretty valid indicator happening, but the goal is to minimize that, that dip, to not go down so low and to shorten the amount of time before you start to see the growth. And Ms. Camo, if you can go to the next slide. What they talk about in terms of the research on minimizing the, that gap or that dip is really looking at how do we support our teachers? How do we make sure we're providing empathy and understanding for the challenges associated with implementing a new curriculum, celebrating the small wins and that happen within the classroom, both for students and for teachers? And then the final piece is around professional development. And the research shows the strength of embedding professional development within the school day as opposed to times outside the day. And that's where we're working this year with EL education and have consultants coming in that are helping guide the work that Ms. Camo has been leading and doing. that are helping guide the work that Ms. Camo has been leading and doing a phenomenal job with. And also working with the teachers and our teacher leaders, so building the capacity of our teachers. So I'll go, you can go to the next slide, Ms. Camo. And this is just now some additional information about the ELA results by grade span. When looking at the grade span, we again see a similar pattern as the state. We continue to be above the state average in all three grade level groupings. Grade 10 was fairly consistent change in performance. Grade six through eight shows some signs of recovery and we're seeing that at the state level as well. So the drop for those grade levels wasn't as significant last year as it had been from 19 to 21. Grades three through five, you saw similar drops and similar scores and patterns as the state. And one of the things the state's identified, and we're going to take a close look at this as well within our curriculum, is the impact on early literacy skills. So from 2020 to 2022, our students in the primary grades haven't had the typical experience. And so because of that, we're seeing some gaps in some of the early literacy skills. And that again, it's consistent with, with what they're seeing at the state level. You can go to the next slide. And then, you know, I know the school committee is always interested in looking at subgroups and how those students are performing. Again, we see fairly consistent patterns with the state. Although our EL, our former EL, our second language learners, we see some real improvement from 19 to 22 in terms of scores. As well as with the students with disabilities, there was a greater drop from 19 to 22 as compared with the state. And then go to the next slide. And then this again, just looks at our grade 10 scores. We just, we separated out grade 10 from grades three to eight. At grade 10, again, fairly consistent with the state. But we do see significant growth, both for our students with disabilities as well as the economically disadvantaged students or our low-income students. Next slide, please. And then I just wanted to take a quick look at writing because the two pieces that the state identified as areas of concern were both the early literacy skills as, as an impact of COVID and the pandemic and just interrupted or different learning opportunities for students, as well as shifts in writing and the impact that writing has had. So writing continues to be an area of concern, both at the state level as well as for North Middlesex. And Lisa, if you go to the next slide. So the two areas that we look at for writing are both idea development and writing conventions. And what, what this next slide shows is that the writings results declined significantly for both the state and for North Middlesex between 2019 and 2022. They're seeing more students that are getting a zero. So within each grade level on, on one of the future slides, it just shows the, the different types of prompts that they had at each grade level. We're seeing more students that are scoring us, getting a score of zero. So they're not earning any points on, on the writing prompts. Larger decreases were noted in performance of students in grades three to five than in grades six through eight. So again, that's a similar pattern as what they're seeing at the state. And I think again, reflective of some of those early literacy and writing skills. You can go to the next slide, Lisa. And again, this is just the two areas that students get scored on, both their idea development, how they organize their thoughts. Within the MCAS, the focus has been on narrative writing and using effective literis, literary techniques, details and well-structured sequences. And then also the other piece is looking at the writing convention. So not how, not their thinking, but how do they organize their writing? How do they use correct spelling, punctuation, word usage and those other standard conventions of grammar? Go to the next slide, Lisa. Not going to go through each of these in detail, but this just shows at each grade level, how many prompts there were and then what the focus of the prompts were. So you see, starting in grades three and four, there was only one writing prompt. As you move up into the upper grade levels, you have two writing prompts. You can go to the next slide, Lisa. Again, two writing prompts, grades seven through 10. For the actual PowerPoint presentation, those are all, the ones that are underlined are hyperlinked to the actual question from, from the state. That's available online. Anyone can actually access that by going to the state website. The ones that are not underlined, the state did not release either the prompt or the reading associated with the prompt. Next slide, Lisa. So in terms of the key takeaways, writings declined significantly in both North Middlesex and at the state. When we compare the change from 2019 to 2022, there's a decline in overall ELA scores at all grade levels. Our scores are consistent in terms of the, the change or the impact with state results. And for our 2022, again, we did better than the state average in grades three, six, seven, eight and 10, and within subgroup categories. So you saw back on a previous slide, just in terms of the performance of our second language learners, our students with disabilities at the upper grade levels as well as students, low-income students. The two areas of improvement that the state's identified and that we're looking at is both the impact of the lower writing scores and how we can help enhance that for our students through the EL education program, as well as the early literacy challenges. So on a later slide, we'll talk about what we're going to be doing at the district level to address some of those areas. Now onto math, and again, I won't go through all, but you, it's a consistent pattern with what they saw at the state. Scores at or above the state performance in all grades except for grade five. Significant declines were noted in performance from 19, right, 2019 to 2021. Improvements noted in performance from 21 to 22, but it's still weaker than the 2019 performance. So again, you're starting to see some recovery from 21 to 22, but still not where we were or where we want to be based on the school year 2019. This slide again just shares the subgroups for grades three through eight. And we see some stronger performance at the state level from our EL students. Go to the next slide, Lisa. This is the grade 10 subgroups. The performance of the subgroups are better in North Middlesex than state in all areas. There's no EL score because the, the group size for the number of students that were taking the test wasn't large enough for the state to release overall scores within that subgroup. We do note improvements from 2019 to 2022 by our students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged. So again, that, we saw that same, those two same groups doing really well with the ELA. They also did well with their math test. And then there was a decline in male performance from 2019 to 2022, which was a greater decline than the performance for our female students. We are doing some additional statistical analysis, both for ELA math and for our science. As we look at the subgroups to make, to look at, you know, while there may be some differences within those groups, are the differences statistically significant to say that there's a, a major or an issue between the performance of one subgroup versus the all-students group? You can go to the next slide, Lisa. So just some key takeaways for the math data. We see improvements overall from 21 to 22 in grades three through eight. There's a decline in math scores from 21 to 22 for grade 10. The shifts are consistent from North Middlesex to the state. And for 2022, we performed better in all grades except for grade five than the state average and within subgroup categories as well. We'll shift on to science and so with science, the things that I want to note is just that we're at or above the state average. And then you see signs of recovery. So if you look at those changes, both for the district as well as the state, because the state was recognizing some, some recovery as well. The, the drop wasn't as significant from 19 to 21 and 21 to 22 for grade five. And we actually see improvement in grade eight. You can go to the next slide, Lisa. Then this just shows some of our subgroup performances for students in grade five through eight. And overall, student performance was at or above the state average. And the drop in scores was consistent with what we're seeing at the state level as well. The next slide is just the same thing in terms of our subgroup performances for grade 10. And our subgroups are performing significantly better than the state subgroup performance for grade 10. So some key takeaways for science. Grades five and eight are showing signs of recovery compared to the change in scores from 2019 to 2021, with changes in scores from the 21 to 22 results. Grade eight results comparing 2021 to 2022 show signs of improvement. At grade 10, North Middlesex is strong performance compared to the state average. A difference of 19% in the number of students that are exceeding or meeting the expectations, which was really nice to see that strong performance for our high school students. And in 2022, the North Middlesex performed at or above the state average in all three grade levels. And then the, again, the shifts that we saw in terms of the declines as well as the recovery period was consistent with what they were seeing with the state results. So the next few slides, and I'll again, go through these quickly, but this just shows the comparison between what we call our DART districts. So the state looks at, to develop the cohort of who your DART districts are, they look at which districts are most comparable to you in terms of the size, the number of students, in terms of the different subgroups, the percentages of students that, students with disabilities, English language learners. And so they try to match you with other districts that they say have a similar look. And when we compare ourselves with the other DART districts, we outperformed five out of 10 DART districts in the ELA scores. And the decline of 7% from 21 to 22, the DART district, our, our decline was 7%. The DART district average decline was 6.1%. Same thing for looking at math. We outperformed three out of the 10 DART districts and we had an increase of five percentage points between 21 and 22. And the DART districts also saw an increase as well with an average increase of 6.7%. Looking at science, we outperformed six out of the 10 DART districts. And our scores stayed relative, stayed stable between 21 to 22. And there was an average decline of the DART districts of just about 0.25%. As we look at DART districts for grade 10, we, North Middlesex grade 10 students outperformed eight out of nine DART districts and had the same performance as Sandwich School District. We had a decline of 5% from school year 21 to 22, whereas the average DART district decline was 4.36%. Looking at math, our 10th graders outperformed five out of the 10 DART districts. Again, same performance as Sandwich, I'm sorry. Not the same performance as Sandwich. They outperformed five out of 10 DART districts with a decline of 6% from 21, 22. And the average DART district decline was pretty, pretty low at a 0.1%. So just some overall key takeaways from the DSC. As you can see, we're very comparable with what the, the trends were at the state level. The only difference in terms of the, some of the state highlights was they saw a slight increase in science scores at grade five where we did not see, we saw improvements, but not at the same rate that the state had seen that. So obviously, when we look at these results compared to our pre-pandemic, our 2019 school year, both within North Middlesexes as well as at the state level, we, we have some way to go to, to fully recover from those learning losses. And the state really again, highlights that student absenteeism continues to be both for the past as well as continued absenteeism can impact the recovery efforts. So the North Middlesex tied or performed the state, outperformed the state in ELA in six of the seven grade levels, in five of the seven grade levels for math and in all three grade levels for science. And I'm not going to go through those, the DART districts again, but you again, see the, the comparison to how we performed compared to DART districts. You can go. So we look, the other thing we look at is, and you can go to the next slide, Lisa. Is besides just MCAS, which is a snapshot of students' performance at the end of a school year, we also had last year the iReady diagnostic assessment. And that really looks at how students are performing throughout the year and the growth that they make. So the iReady assessment in terms of ELA, and it was administered to our K to eight students, 62% of the students in the district were assessed as either at early or on-grade level in ELA. Another 24% were just slightly below grade level. Next slide. The other thing we can do with the diagnostic from iReady is look at growth. So similar to the student growth percentile that the state has, what we see in terms of growth is that 50% of our students made at least one year of growth last year. And that's what they're calling typical growth. Stretched growth are those students that made growth beyond what we would expect them to make in terms of one year's worth of growth. And there were 27% of our students that made it more than one year's worth of growth. Next slide, Lisa. So same thing with math, the iReady diagnostic was also available for math. And 50% of our students that were assessed in grades K to eight showed that they were assessed at being on-grade level with 31% being just slightly below grade level. We also can do that same level of growth analysis for our students on the iReady assessment. And what this showed for us last year was that 38% of the students made one year of growth last year. So they, they're just on, at 38% made what we would consider typical growth compared to where they started. And then we did have 15% of the students that actually showed more than one year's worth of growth compared to where they were at the beginning of the school year. And the final slides, and I promise I'm almost done. These are just the, each of the, just the, the elementary level, middle and high school took a look at the results and tried to identify what are the areas that they want to improve on and continue to work on. And so at the elementary level, you can see the different strengths that they've identified. But more importantly for me and for planning is, are the areas of need and improvement. So they want to look at time for writing support across all grade levels and all content areas. So what we're seeing with writing is it's not just about being able to write a narrative, but it's also about being able to write within science, math and other content areas as well. They want to continue to develop the foundational skills for reading, writing and math. And then identify PD for continued training in the IM. So that's the math program that we're implementing this year. And then looking at social group skills, groups and lessons to provide students support in those areas. We're seeing, because of the pandemic and especially at the lower grade levels and the inability for students to, our kids to interact with one another due to the pandemic that they, in ways that they may have done in the past, that, that lack of social skills development that they develop in the early years is, is definitely showing itself as the students are entering school in the early grade levels. These are the next slide, the middle schools. Again, they identify some areas of strength and supports that they have. The two areas that they identified as a leadership team for need were more professional development around the IM math program. So the illustrative math is our new math program that we started this year. So as with the elementary school, they, they want to see some more professional development around that area. And that they're continuing to work on implementing SEL strategies. So again, those social, emotional learning approaches that can impact a student's ability to access learning in the curriculum. And then at the high school level, the two areas that they identified for needs were just working with the curriculum coordinators. So Lisa as the humanities, Kevin as the math curriculum, the directors, as well as working with the department heads to look at the best ways for interventions, planning staff PD around those areas. And then as, as similar pattern, we're seeing established meaningful SEL activities. So looking at how we can continue to support students even at the high school level with social, emotional learning and how they are leveraging the use of their flex time and advisory to really to support the students in those areas. And then when we look at the curriculum priorities for my department, working with Lisa as a humanities director, Kevin as the STEM's director, STEM director. We're in the first year of implementation of the IM for grades K to eight, the illustrative math. So we. So we anticipate that, that similar implementation dip that we're seeing for our EL, ELA students, we'll see. As we look at results this year for our math students. And we're in the second year of implementation of our EL program Expeditionary Learning for grades K to eight. Science, we are moving forward with implementing Project Lead the Way, which is a more hands-on, interactive approach to. Teaching science and we're looking at ways to create pathways for students at the high school in that area as well as how to build in. The programs and activities at the lower grade levels. At the high school level, we're also, our secondary level, we're also looking at Portrait of a Graduate, which really identifies. What are, what do we think a learner should look like when they exit North Middlesex Regional High School? Whether they're going to college, whether they're. Going to be working, whether they're going into the military, what are those core skills and competencies? That we believe as a district, we need to be. Developing within students and how do we support them and. Implement and embed opportunities throughout the curriculum and throughout. Their time at North Middlesex to develop those skills. And then the final piece, and I think you've seen this from some of Superintendent Morgan's. Recent memos around the Acceleration Academy, and so. Not just in North Middlesex, but across the state, we're seeing the students in grades K to two who didn't have a typical. K to two experience, we're recognizing those gaps in learning opportunities for them. And so leveraging some of the ESR funds, we're going to be looking at a way to. Create a, an acceleration academy for. Students, identify students in kindergarten through grade two during the vacation weeks. To build in some of those foundation skills in math and ELA and also in social emotional learning. So. Any, any questions? And I, I know I went through that quickly, but. Data, you could, you could spend hours talking about data.
David?
Hi there. Thank you so much for that great presentation. First, I would really just like to commend all the teachers and. People in the district because it, you are right, Mr. Brevoyer Reese, every single year. You know, for almost every single category, it does look like we are above the state average, so even if we're losing more, we had more to lose. So that would, that would make sense. I do have. A few questions. If you don't mind, I'd like to go through them.
Sure.
And this can be something that the, that the district gets back to me on, but. So one of the things I was, I was thinking about just with that fifth grade drop off. Is. Have we looked at districts that have the separation? So like we do K four and five eight. Have we compared ourselves to other districts that do K four and five eight? Whereas that's such a transitional year to have it also happening at the same point. Whereas other districts might be, you know, K six, and so those kids are more comfortable with their teachers, with their surroundings. That I was wondering if, if we've looked into that at all.
I have not, but that's certainly something I can look into. And the other thing that I can also look into and share back with the committee is just. Is this a trend we're seeing every year at grade five, or was it just? The student group that we happened to have that, that year in terms of their performance?
Sure. So one of the other ones is there, has there been any early reports from teachers or groups on the new math program? Because math, and it's not just a COVID year thing, math really does seem to be. You know, our area with most room for growth. So if we heard anything about this new math program.
So the, I think the teachers are continuing to grapple with it and I, we're seeing some of that implementation dip. It's a, it's a change in thinking and a change in approach of how to teach math with a greater focus on. Language and math discourse, and I think teachers are still. Working to try to figure that out. The other challenge we're seeing and teachers are doing a great job of really building this up is because it's a shift. Students at the higher grade levels, I think, are struggling more with it than at the lower grade levels. Because the, there's an assumption from the program that if a student's in seventh grade, that they've had that program since kindergarten. And so. It's, it's, it's more difficult for those students, and I think the teachers are. Have a greater challenge just in terms of that transition piece.
Sure, okay. Do we know what the average? Drop was in MCAS scores? Well, actually, I looked at that data and it looks like. You know, it looks like maybe like five points, which. The thing I hate about, you know, all of these different tests is that that five points can put you from being a three to a two, and all of a sudden it, you know, alarm bells are flashing. Whereas honestly, there's not too, too much of a, of a drop, so nevermind, I did answer that myself later on, or you guys answered that for me, excuse me. Next up, math, so. Did we? Do you guys have the data on the subcategories for the math? Tests? So did we keep our numbers base ten up? Or algebra or algebraic operations? Did we keep those subcategories up, whereas like measurement and data? Or geometry fell off because we just didn't have time? Did we, did we break those math scores down to subcategories?
Not for, for the purposes of this presentation, but that's something that the principals are actually working within each of the schools to break down and look at. In terms of school performance and identify what are those. Areas that we can continue, continue to do well when, as well as ones that we might have had a drop. So I can, I can look more into that as a district as well.
Terrific. And then, no, and, and just. Yeah, just looking at everything too, and especially our special education department. To it really looks like. Let me see here, what slide was it? Excuse me. I was looking at it at the end here. Yeah, so slides thirty eight and thirty nine, it really looks like our, our students on. Our special ed students are. Holding a firm above the state average, so. Awesome. Thank you so much for a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any other questions or comments from anybody? Tom?
Thank you. Yeah, similarly, I, I think I was encouraged. You know, by some of the demographic. Data that we saw in there. Like Dave, I, I think I continue to be kind of worried or concerned, I guess, about the, the fifth grade transition there, and I think. You know, some of the stuff that we've seen in years past, even predates. Some of the pandemic, I guess my question would be, you know, is there more that we need to do as a district, as a committee? With that transition to middle school or, you know, are there things that, that we're considering with that transition?
Yeah, that, that's a good question, and I, I'd like to kind of dig a little deeper into the historical. Trends for fifth grade, but I think you both bring up a really good point in terms of that transition piece and the concerns around it. So we'll, we'll look at that.
And then I know, you know, as, as part of some of our work that we've been hiring. Some interventionists to kind of step in, I'm just wondering what their role might be in. You know, supporting some of these gaps.
Yeah, so one of the things, you know, the interventionists have been great, some of them, some of our intervention supports are provided or funded through Title One. We were able to hire a number of additional interventionists through the ESR funds. And they are working with students that are specifically identified through some of these assessments such as iReady or iXL. That are identifying are. Where we're seeing some of the gaps with those students and then working individually with those students. And then meeting with Kevin and Lisa on a regular basis to look at data and look at how they can support individual students, which students might need. Be ready to move out because they've. Mastered the skill that they're weak in and which students might, might come in for extra support. But it's, it's been a great resource for, to be able to have all those interventionists, they do a great job.
Awesome. So the, and then my just last question, you know, in terms of the iReady assessments. Would these ever at some point be available to parents or guardians? I know I would love, like if, you know, just as a parent. Would love to, you know, get my hands on that and look at my own kids.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, as teachers share some of that information out at conference time, but if there's like a specific parent that wants to see a report, we can get that information. I will say this year where we've shifted away from iReady to iXL. And, but it, it also offers similar diagnostic opportunities, it just builds in some additional instructional opportunities connected with the diagnostics. And so we felt like that was a better. Tools to be using to assess the students.
Great, thank you. Thanks for answering my questions and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? Questions? Comments? All right, my, my only comment, and it kind of follows on what Tom said is, is, and obviously don't need to answer it right now, but kind of interested to know what. We as the school committee can be doing to help support some of the efforts that are needed to. To bring us up in levels where, where there are perceived gaps, so. Look forward to, to learning what more we can do to help support that, especially with budget season coming up. So that would be helpful. And again, appreciate, appreciate you walking us through it. I was looking at some of the materials before the meeting and like the graph and stuff didn't make sense to me, so I appreciate.
Thank you.
All right, if no one has anything else. Questions wise, then we will, we'll proceed. All right, thank you again. Next up, we have. October first enrollment. And I don't. See this.
Hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. So this was part of the packet. And it, it does have our October first enrollment. For, for this current school year and in looking at, you know, the, the numbers in total. Overall, when you look at the district as a total, we have, we're at plus thirty two. From where we were last October, but we're actually down forty four from where we were in June. So that, that just shows a, a really a lot of transition in the district between October and the end of the school year. It's something, we see transition in the summertime. For example, last October, we were at two thousand nine hundred and ninety students in the district and currently we're at three thousand twenty two. But in June, we were at three thousand and sixty six, so that represents really a loss of forty four students. And the place that it really seems to be coming from is we have seen a pretty significant drop. In student size at the Spalding Memorial School, which is down forty six students from last year. A good deal of that has to do with the fact that it's got a very small kindergarten class with seventy one students in it. Much smaller than, certainly much smaller than, than usual, so small class sizes, which is certainly great for those students. But both Nancy Haynes and myself are looking into, we're trying to dig deep as, and to try to figure out why. There seems to be a loss of students from Townsend, and we're looking obviously at Neshoba Tech. We are looking at some of the charter schools, and we're also looking at kindergarten age students that may have chosen other options. But overall, again, for, for October, we are in a pretty steady place. But those numbers can change between, certainly between now and the end of the school year, something that we have noticed. That's really created a significant bump is at Varnum Brook. Varnum Brook. Essentially went from five hundred and sixty one students last year at this time. To six hundred and thirty six students for, for a plus seventy five. We continue, and it was a very busy summer at Varnum Brook, we had lots of students coming in, that is where our sub separate programs are. As well, but we also continue to see students. Moving into some of the sub separate programs. Obviously looking for least restrictive environments for all of our students, but we have seen a significant increase in the student body at Varnum Brook. So overall, it's steady, but the, the two anomalies would be Spalding and Varnum, where Spalding lost. A substantial number of students in part due to a small kindergarten class, so it's, it's. I guess it's all relative in how you look at it, but certainly a significant increase at, at Varnum Brook. Which we're, we're certainly looking at, we're looking at the staffing to make sure that we have adequate staffing in place. Questions on the October one reports, and again, these, these change.
I had just a question on the. I guess the, the Spalding numbers have, have we looked at and correlated that with just new growth in Townsend? Like new homes or? Folks moving in to see if that's related to that at all, or?
So, so we, we're looking at growth and we're also looking at. Again, the number of kindergarten age students in the district and how many are actually attending. School in the district, how many students are being homeschooled? And then of course, looking at some of the other alternatives, whether it be charter schools. Private high schools, Neshoba Tech, so it is something that Nancy Haynes and I are looking into, but it is going to take some time. There's nothing glaring right now, but certainly, certainly something that is popping up, but it does not account for all forty four students on average. Are the small, is the small kindergarten registration size.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I know, and I know we can't, you know, do this every year, but just thinking long term, any consideration as we have maybe some openings. At Spalding, and then we have, you know, it feels like most of the programs have been, have ended up over at Varnum. Balancing some of that out a little bit.
So certainly, I, I think one of the issues and one of the reasons why. We moved the, the programs to Pepperell, both elementary and middle were essentially twofold. One, because it made. Sense to have our evaluation team chair. Not have to travel as much and it allows her to focus her attention. On those two schools that are so close to each other without really losing a lot of travel time between the schools. Of, of course, the, the other piece is looking at special education transportation. In making sure that where the majority of students in the, in the sub separate programs are coming from Pepperell because it's the largest. Town in the regional school district, it made sense to. Transport the majority of students to Pepperell as opposed to. Ashby at the time, where the fewer students were coming from Ashby, so again, there's certainly room in Ashby, but with that. Comes separating the schools by about thirty minutes. For the evaluation team chair to get there. And again, it's a loss of travel time both ways, and then on top of that, we'd have a significant increase in transportation costs. We saved well over a hundred thousand dollars in transportation when we moved the programs. To Pepperell. As far as Spalding goes right now, there is no room, the only room that we have in Townsend. Would be at Squanah Cook, and we obviously want to make sure, as, as I'm sure everyone's aware, that we just want to. Keep the kids with their like peers, age group wise. And that's why we continuously look for solutions for the gateway program, which again, doesn't. You know, that's the eighteen to twenty two population that is at Varnum Brook, because right now there currently is no space at the high school. For an additional classroom.
Thank you.
So obviously, always looking at potential solutions. But the, certainly the, the, the size of Varnum Brook has become, is, is starting to. You know. Raise some red flags, and we are, we had a meeting there today about potentially adding some staffing with ESR funds to get us through the balance of the school year.
Thank you, already.
Quick comment on the presentation. I found, I don't know if anybody else did or not, but I found. These pages a little awkward to figure out what was going on. If we can just have one page summarizing this in the future versus each one of these pages with all of this information. As close together as it is, trying to figure it out and what it's telling me would be. Appreciated.
Sure, I can certainly look to do that.
Any other questions from anybody? Like just to kind of piggyback on Randy. Like, uh, just to kind of piggyback on Randy's comment, it I don't remember, I I might be remembering my own spreadsheet, or I I thought in the past, um we had up a visual of some comparisons year over year, so it would be, I'd be interested to see that. As well, we see usually see the ripples of the grades moving ahead, and you can kind of see where there's some anomalies.
Sure, I I believe this is I either coming directly from Desi or through A- Aspen. Um, but I can certainly look to see if we can have it um improved as far as uh for presentation purposes.
Appreciate it. Alright, if there's no else, nothing else on enrollment, we'll uh move on to the memorials list, Superintendent.
Sure, so for this, um, I I just wanted to provide is updated a list is possible for the committee, and I know that last at the last meeting, there was a request um to have a more memorial bench from um Mr. Dion for his daughter Melissa um on the property. I know we were talking about uh potentially Varnum Brook, but also potentially the high school. Um, but but before making any decisions, we just wanted to get this off uh to the committee. Um, this did come from um the building and grounds department, and this is currently what we have. We actually have some things on here that have not been replaced um since the um since high school building project, which is something that that does need to be addressed, just some of the um, not the actual um it's essentially some plaques that need to be replaced. Um, again, from the building projects as things were moved um and disrupted as part of the building project, so um certainly um we will continue to um look at options uh from Mr. Dion. But also wanted to provide the committee, because I know it has been asked, uh it was asked prior to COVID. And then COVID came and it and it kind of um slipped away, so I just wanted to bring this back to the committee. Um, and and at least put at your fingertips, the most current list of memorials that we have in the district um were things that would be classified as donations. And a- again, I know parts of it are confusing. Um, and a- again, there are certainly still some question marks, but if if anyone has any additional information on, you know, something like the sun dial, which um a- again, we don't have a lot of history on that, but if someone from the com- if one of the committee members or perhaps someone from from the towns is aware of it, then it would enable us just to add, ju- just to complete the list and add some more details to it.
I think I mentioned at the last meeting that I know there are I know there's the plaque by a tree, but I think there's a couple plaques for rooms at uh at the former Peter Fitzpatrick School. Do these, and this is more logistical question, but do these stay with the facility or these for the districts? Um, I know we move like plaques, like dedications from a particular room in the old building to now a different place of the new building, like how? What's the thought on how that all works and and should we be tracking gifts that are at facilities that aren't part of the district anymore?
Um, so I I think it's, I think it would be dependent on what's been named or what is what's been dedicated. So for instance, if it's um something, you know, using a a simple one, um, you know, a library uh would be difficult to move that unless a new facility was named after that, and oftentimes, um, as new facilities are built, sometimes things are rededicated. Um, so I I I think we could certainly find a place um for things, um for plaques that are not necessarily um assigned to a particular um room or to um or to a particular space. I think we can certainly find a place for that. Uh, you know, essentially to to keep that memory a- alive. But I I think we just have to be cautious about what what it was, um, what the memorial is standing for. Is it standing for a room at the Peter Fitz and would moving it um, you know, take away from that? So maybe we can come up with a list of of items that are not on this, because I'm I'm sure we have um quite a few that are out there that are not a part of this list. Um, especially in some of the buildings um that may have been taken offline and look to see if if they can be um reconstituted elsewhere in the district. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, and and even if it's um, even if it's just a reference to hey, this this, we're aware of this previous remembrance or what have you, but um it's it's not part of the district anymore, or or maybe a space has been rededicated, so it's kind of it's we're acknowledging it, but it's not maybe displayed or anything anymore, that name naming might not be in place, so.
Sure.
That's, I think that's fine.
I can be happy to set up a time to come over to Peter Fitz and and take a look also.
Yeah, I think there's three. I I know there's a, again, a tree out back. I think there's a classroom in the old part of the building, and I think there's one more plaque somewhere.
Okay.
And I can just say any of those details.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions on that?
Alright. Thank you for putting that list together, I appreciate it.
Um, not a problem.
Next up, we've got the feasibility study for Ashby Elementary.
Okay, so um at our meeting, at this point, it it was a couple weeks ago, and this was not formally voted on. Uh, did just to be clear, but we have, um, there did seem to be support um to at least start moving in the direction of a feasibility study that would that would not necessarily be tied to MSBA, at least initially. Um, a- a- again, um, just through conversations that I have had um with architects in the state, a couple of O P Ms um in the state, there's still that issue of the size of Ashby being detrimental to Ashby getting an MSBA-approved project. Um, because again, that the and last year, over fifty projects were applied for, and I believe it was sixteen were approved. Um, and they're really looking at that three hundred student threshold, which currently Ashby does not have. Um, so there there was talk at the last meeting, and there seemed to be agreement, but again, no formal vote that we would, it it is an initial step at least bring to the school committee um the prospect of doing a feasibility study. Um, and we have learned through legal counsel that we would in fact have to bring on board in um an O P M as well, um, an owner's project manager, uh which would also come at a cost. Uh, it it just through some of the um, you know, some of the preliminary pricing that Nancy and I have done, knowing that we're going to have to send an R F P out for both the feasibility study and the O P M. Um, we're we're estimating it's going to uh be in the ballpark of um two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a feasibility study and likely a fifty thousand dollar fee for the O P M, so a three hundred thousand dollar price tag. At at this point, I I I can speak uh for myself and Nancy, we are just a little concerned with um with putting it off too long, uh just because of the work that needs to be done with getting the R F P out there um and and the work and the planning that has to go into a potential project. Um, but the reality is, is that at some point in time, the committee is going to have to vote on it and notify the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, and then it's going to have to go to town meeting. Um, I I don't believe that Ashby's doing a fall town meeting, um as we're moving out of fall at this point anyway. Um, but I I do think we at least have to start um getting the ball rolling um for the for a potential spring town meeting to get this on the docket. But again, based on early estimations, it looks like it's going to be about a three hundred thousand dollar project without MSBA, uh just for the feasibility study. Um, the MSBA project, again, would likely put us over a million dollars for a feasibility study. And Brad, what did, I don't know if June, uh if June wants to add anything.
Yeah, go ahead, June.
Um, sure, like Brad said, we did not um vote on this at our 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 last building committee meeting. However, it did seem pretty unanimous among everyone that there's not a lot more that we can do, and there's not a lot that we can decide until we have some information back from a feasibility study. So um, we, you know, our next steps would kind of be working towards what information exactly we want to gather out of the feasibility study. Um, but we we can't really come to you with a recommendation or come to the school committee with a recommendation as far as what direction to go with Ashby Elementary until we have more information that we need from the feasibility study, so. Kind of got our hands tied with that. Um, so yeah, like Brad said, uh the building committee hadn't voted previously, but if we want to you know, move forward with the school committee voting on this now, since, you know, we are under um a timeline. That's fine. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me or Brad or Building Committee.
I I guess a question slash comment, I assume finding someone to do the feasibility study and O P M and all that uh that has to be posted, go out for bid and all that?
Yes.
That's a thirty, sixty day process? What's that timeline look like?
Um, I I I believe it's the, from what Nancy's saying, and again, Nancy's not here to to answer it, but I I believe it's in excess of thirty days. You know, we do have, obviously, the holidays coming. Um, so it could potentially take longer.
Yeah, but that's I'm just thinking if it's by the time we get stuff put together, published, evaluate, make a decision. I mean, realistically, you're probably looking at end of December or like January to get started on anything, right? And then that leaves a few months before April town meeting? Is that
Yes.
that realistic at that point? No, because I don't know what the timeline for the feasibility of that facility would be. Do we have an indication or no?
No, I I a- as far as um, a- again, not entirely sure um how how it's going to work out, just because, again, there are so many options um that a feasibility study is going to look at as far as how to address Ashby. Um, and you know, there's also the potential for hidden issues that we're not aware of.
Yep.
Um, but either way, I I I do think I agree with you, and I I I think that we're up against it for time primarily because there are items in that building that are going to have to start being addressed um likely before um any decisions are made. Um, you know, we do have a potential boiler issue. We have a potential, we have a roof that's been patched, but it hasn't been replaced on on the abandoned wing. So there are certainly things that that we just need to need to keep in mind, and I I think that um, you know, certainly, if not at this meeting, maybe it maybe at the next meeting. If we could make a decision to put out a feasibility study, um, it would be helpful, and then that way um, it it's it's it is ultimately going to put it um in the hands of the residents to determine if this is something that they want to explore.
Uh, Randy?
Um trying to remember in the past if feasibility, the initial feasibility studies, if we've paid from the district for any of the um feasibility studies versus um the towns, like taking it out of our E and D. And I wish um Nancy Haynes was on, because she would have that information. Brad, do you happen to know uh in the past, our 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 precedent as far as some of these feasibility studies, if the district paid or always the town?
The only thing that 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 I have been told is that Nancy's pretty confident that it's going to be um Ashby. It's going to have to fund it. She has not mentioned other funding sources unless um there were students um from the other towns that were attending the school. Um, you know, so something along those lines. But um, she's again, just based on my conversations with her, she seems to think that this is going to be um that it's going to be in Ashby, um, Ashby decision, Ashby vote. But she has not mentioned the E and D being used or any other uh district funds.
I mean, on that note, Brad, I would think that that we would want to know um what potential sources we have for funding for this. So perhaps um the Ashby Elementary Building Committee is meeting next week, uh next Tuesday, I believe. So perhaps we can formally vote then and just get that clarification from Nancy so that we can come back to the next school committee meeting. We have a second November meeting, right, this month?
Yes.
And then vote at that time, if that makes sense, everyone. I think that, but you know, with two weeks, give or take, you know, from now to two weeks from now, I think we're still in the same relative timeframe.
Agreed.
I would, I guess my only suggestion, a- and if you're not meeting sorry, June, your meeting is
We're meeting next week. Next week, and then we all meet together, the school committee.
Okay. Yeah, I I just um I guess recommend that if there's anything materials to put together for like the um the the was it the R F P process to to find someone to do the feasibility study, that that gets started sooner than later. Assuming that that this would go forward, just so we don't lose time. I I just get worried that with the holidays, if we don't have somebody on board by again, early to mid-January, um, getting that done by the, what is it, the town meetings are usually mid-April? Right after the election, or is it mid, early May?
I think it's the first, the first Saturday in May is actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I mean, that gives us like about four months. So that'd be my concern, but otherwise, yeah, I'm I'm all for moving forward with this.
And how soon? Like, I know we have to give the towns notice, but is the towns' notice sixty days before or forty-five? Before they put it on their warrant? Is just cut?
I I I believe it's forty-five, but I'm I'm not positive.
Okay.
But a- again, it it's it's my understanding that we put the feasibility study out for bid. Um, and then once we get the prices, then the towns will have the or unless there's another way, then Ashby will be voting on whether or not to spend the money for a feasibility study.
Would Pepperell and Townsend also have to vote?
I believe they do have to vote. Um, but there's no financial um burden on the towns again, unless there's another, unless there's another funding mechanism.
Or they can choose not to, yeah, or the towns can choose not to do the vote if it's less than a certain percentage, I think. I think that's why Randy's hand is up. But I'll let her go.
Yes, that that was why um I was gonna, I was raising my hand. Um, is the administrators can decide uh to give approval or no answer um in the timeframe that they have, which would be an approval. Um, especially if it's like zero cost or minimal cost, uh that doesn't affect their budget. It's their choice.
Alright, anything else on that? So we'll wait till the twenty-first to take a vote?
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next up, we have the action steps towards goals, Superintendent.
Yeah, so um I I emailed um the action steps to the the committee. I I'm not totally clear um if if they have to be voted on or not. Where where the goals were approved at the last meeting, um but did want to get them in everyone's hands. Um, I I've made them um at least, at least in my opinion, all um actionable items um that I will be able to provide evidence for to show whether or not I I've met the action step or not, um and thus um met the goal or not, and happy to take questions.
Uh, go ahead, Randy.
Um, first off, thank you very much for um revisiting those. Uh, the the new action items are uh definitely an improvement, uh at least uh from looking at them on this end without the evidence at the end. From looking at them on this end without the evidence at the end, that they definitely can give us some uh evidence at the end, and I know what you're going for. Um, as a final step, which is really nice to see, uh, my other question is actually for you, Craig. Is I not, I don't remember exactly what our vote was at the last meeting or whether we, um, approved. The larger goal with the action items to come back, or if it was just an approval and an understanding that the action items come back.
My recollection, and I, I don't have that detail in my notes, but my recollection was that, uh. We had approved the goals and just had asked the superintendent to come back with uh some specific. Like the, the smart aspect of those goals, um, which I think is what's in the packet tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, any other comments on uh the action steps and the goals? All right, um. So I think we're good, I appreciate Brad, those updates, that was very helpful.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Um, onto subcommittee report, we have anything from Accelerator Repair, Lisa?
No, and finance is good as well, right now.
Uh, negotiations, Tom?
Uh, we have an executive session coming up and we can talk a little bit more about that then.
Okay, that works, uh, policy, Randy?
Um, we just have uh one policy up for uh adoption, and that's I H B G homeschooling, um, I have not received any. Um, comments or suggestions on this, uh, Robin, have you received anything and?
Nope, not, no, Randy.
Um, then I will move, uh, that the school committee vote to adopt policy I H B G homeschooling as presented.
Who was that, second?
June.
June, thank you, sorry. All right, any questions or comments on policy I H B G? All right, so this is to approve for adoption, David?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes, that's unanimous, thank you, anything else on policy, Randy?
I talked tonight.
All right, thank you, um. Next, uh, we'll be moving into uh executive session, um. So if someone would like to make the motion that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to M G L Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A. For the following purpose, purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to and in preparation for collective bargaining with the North Middlesex Regional School District Teachers Association. Because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. And purpose seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant need requirements, and that's for the approval of executive session minutes dated June eight, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
And Jessica, thank you, um. David?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Uh, Tom?
Yes.
And now, well, yes, uh, the school committee will uh now be convening an executive session pursuant to M G L Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A. For the following purposes, purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to, in a preparation for collective bargaining. With the North Middlesex Regional School District Teachers Association, because an, an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. And purpose seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant need requirements. Approval of executive session minutes dated June eight, twenty twenty-one, the committee will be reconvening. Uh, in an open session at the conclusion of our executive session, so. Folks could hop over to the other uh Zoom link, uh, we'll talk to you in a few minutes. All right, I think everybody's here, I. Rob and I'm trying to get you to in here and I, it's not working, oh, maybe that worked. All right, so we're back in open session, um. And so we've got uh negotiation and personnel update, uh, back to you, Tom. I think we just need to do the vote in open session if I remember correctly.
Okay, um, so I would make a motion here in open session. Um, that the committee vote to uphold. The grievance from the secretarial unit, um, and re- uphold the decision to reject. The grievance by the superintendent from the secretarial unit, sorry about that.
Second.
All right. Any other questions on that, all right, David?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
No, but yes, so that is unanimous, thank you, everybody, uh, any other business for folks? All right, if not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Lisa, David.
Yep.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote, yes, we are adjourned, everybody, thanks all, have a good night, appreciate it.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.